Aloha and welcome to the first meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Before we get started, we want, we want to welcome our newest commissioner. As you can see, we are now fully staffed with all five commissioners on board here. It's, we'd like to welcome Seth Buckley, who has graciously joined us and accepted his appointment of five years here with us.
As a volunteer.
As a volunteer. Thank you.
We're the volunteer.
As a volunteer.
In case they forgot to mention that.
So you know, when Seth, like I've told the rest of the commissioners who have come forward, it's like, well, I hope you have nothing to do on Thursday. Please make yourself available at all times and your social life is on the door. So thank you Seth. So people on, I mean, licensees online as well as in, in our audience, please give Seth Buckley a warm welcome. So Seth, would you like to say anything or address your?
I'm not one for many words, but it is a privilege to be up here with all of you. I've gotten to know you over the last few weeks and I'm really excited to be up here with you and hopefully I can serve all of you, the public, to the best of my abilities in this position. So thanks.
Thank you. Nicely said. Thank you. Okay, skip to business. We have no minutes to approve. Let's just jump right into it. Calling agenda item number one. Application number two one dash two three one two nine from Seven Mile Miracle LLC.
Aloha commissioners, I'm Steve Humschild. H A U M S C H I L D. I'm with Seven Mile Miracle and the parent company of that is Lonikai Brewing Company.
You, Ms. Wright.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, one letter in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the May 12 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioners Mia Shiro and Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Commissioners, any of you have any questions or type of action?
Hearing, no questions. Motion to approve application number two one dash two three one two nine.
Second.
Okay. No, no, no. Where did you, did you?
I don't have any questions. When you do your stuff, I'm waiting to.
Okay, okay.
And I do have a comment. I don't know when the appropriate time to break.
Please.
So one, one thing to note is that the facility itself, we're not able to currently occupy it because there's an issue between the Department of Permitting and Planning and our landlord name is schools. It's a wastewater issue, so we're not really knowing exactly when we'll be able to occupy. So assuming that the application is approved, we would like to request maybe a start date later in the year. And if we learn that we're allowed to occupy, we would like to be able to communicate that with transparency with the commission and go through all their appropriate steps to make sure we're compliant. It's kind of a strange situation with the occupants.
We need a date certain.
Actually, the recommendation is the commission take action on the application. The normal procedure is six months. If the license has not been effective, for whatever reason, you come back before the commission and say you need additional time to affect the license and provide an estimated date when you think you will be able to. So the recommendation is that you close the loop and take action on it now. In six months, if you're open, that's great. If not, you just come back and say you need additional time.
I'd like to do that, please.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. So we had a second, a second by mission.
Motion to approve application number two one dash two three one two nine.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two three one two nine. Any objections? At the record reflect that. Commissioner Hollinger has voted with reservations. Any with reservation, which was Hollinger, right? Any objective, any, any objections? None. Chair votes I. Application is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number two, application number two two dash two four 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 seven from Yogurt Story, Honolulu Incorporated, Mr. Who.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Kenneth, who are appearing for the applicant, also appearing is Michael Miyasato. M I Y E S T O. He's interning with our firm. Also appearing virtually is Mr. Don Chang Chin Kim. He is the sole principal of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Who. Ms. Wright.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received one written protest, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the May 19 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Chair Godaban and Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Who or his clients or type of action?
Mr. Who, do you have any comments on the letter of protest?
Yes, I do. We did respond to Mr. Paula. We informed him that Yogurt Story is a family. Focusing on breakfast. We've been in operation at the present location since March. No complaints. Prior to that, there was another Yogurt Story, same concept, but just a block away. Never had any issues.
I have a question. Are you folks gonna be keeping the drive-in sign?
That's a good question.
You know, it's a whole new landmark. So you know, I was happy to hear that Iliki, Iliki Drive-In Space was gonna be occupied. But it'd be great if somebody could keep that sign.
Would you, would you want it if it were there?
For me?
I don't believe he has the answer to that. On the sign, we need the sign.
I think we're meant to be flipping.
I'm just wondering. All right. Sorry. Any other substantive questions? Okay, motion to approve application number two two dash two four 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 seven. Second, it's been moved in second to approve application number two two dash two four 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 seven. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Who, Mr. Kim, and Mr. Mia.
Thank you, thank you much.
Oh yeah, pay attention. Calling agenda item number three. Application number two two dash two four nine six four from Lonikua, Oho Noah Culture Institute. Where's the location? Sorry?
It's a cool inner resort. It's an acre property in between the Four Seasons and Paris de Gouin.
Oh, okay. They have had events there that we've.
Did something last year or recently?
We, the last, we've done this, we've done this a number of years. The last time we did it was pre-pandemic in 2019.
So then it's all related into.
We also have up to the HPD, always at all events, as well as from the Aloha team within the resort. That's developed for Chapstone's security group. Oh yeah.
That's very good.
One question. So now reading through your age report, the area says it's going to be barricaded. So are you guys looking at that whole area that you're going to be barricading or is there a specific area that the drinking will be taking place or, because I know it stated, you guys report that you guys would have barricades up in the area where you guys are going to be serving alcohol. So I'm just looking at your map. Right? Is that the whole space will be barricaded?
Yeah. So are you familiar with the site?
I haven't been on the property. I'm just looking at your map.
Yeah, sure. Just ask the question. So yeah, we have three different phases, one, two, and three. Phase two is the largest. It's in the middle. So we're gonna cordon off that area and isolate that. So that folks attending will just stay within that footprint.
Okay.
Motion to approve application number two two dash two four nine six four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two two dash two four nine six four. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Calling agenda item number four. Application number two two dash two four seven three seven from Genoa, Hawaii. Ms. Cole.
Yes, you're in question. Oh, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Welcome to board, Commissioner Buckley. And Nicole, on behalf of the applicant, present to my right is General Manager, Mr. Scott Alexander. We've reviewed investigative report and just like make one small correction. But has the trade name, it should be Genoa Ramen instead of Kenya. So it should be a J instead of K there. And that's the only correction that we have.
Well noted. Let me just, any questions for Ms. Cole? Or type of action? Application number two two dash two four seven three seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two two dash two four seven three seven with the changes indicated by council. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Application is approved. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Okay, moving on to agenda item number five. Application number two three dash zero 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 one from Craft Beer Company LLC. Gentlemen, welcome back.
Thank you. Aloha. I'm Mark Taylor, the General Manager, N E R K T A Y L O R. This is the owner of Off the Wall, Jorge Munoz, J O R G E M U N O Z. And we're here to extend our catering permit to go throughout the year. We have 75 events that we've requested for approval.
How did the events go this past weekend?
Very smoothly. It was a smaller crowd, about 50 people was the first event. And probably I'd say about six children. Very easy to police and enforce people that were drinking because we do have a barricade. They were using their wristbands. And we did card a couple of other people that seemed like they were a little bit younger. And quite frankly, we really didn't sell that much alcohol.
Yes, good practice going forward. Hopefully hit your numbers.
In prior hearings, you described the events. I won't make you do that again. But for these 75, are you expecting it to be approximately the same type of event?
Yes, it'll be the same event in terms of the only difference would be hopefully that the goals have 200 guests as opposed to 500.
You said 400 is your max capacity, correct?
Correct.
And then is there, you would there be any event where there, the law would be canceled?
There could be a possibility due to weather.
Okay, okay. So if we are to approve these 75 days, if for some reason there's a cancellation, would you folks be able to let the commission know immediately so that we know that there isn't a license event happening that evening?
Absolutely. And then when we do that, we receive the $45 back.
Come back and request. Come and request. You better come back and see us.
Just so you know, the request is to benefit us so we don't have to have investigators go out with no event. And for you, in case something happens on the premises, you're responsible for that.
Thank you.
Okay. A motion to approve application number two three dash zero 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 one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the application number two three dash zero 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 one. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Application is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Calling agenda, oh, is Mr. Pooch here? You're not gonna be, okay. Calling agenda item number six, request number two two dash two five zero five four from Rumus Sphere LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ross, this is the authorized agent along with Debbie Michael Burger.
She's the owner of.
Yeah.
If I could, Madam Chair and Commissioners, you've been provided a copy of an email from council for Daniel Jeffers, who's the member of Rumus Sphere LLC. There is, some of you may recall, there has been sort of routinely recurring issue with respect to operations involving this particular licensee, which is not to be confused with, I think it's Blue Boy DVA King's Pub. So council for Daniel Jeffers, who's the member of Rumus Sphere LLC, is currently on the mainland. He requests because they do have an objection to this request and is asked that this matter be continued to next week so that he may make an appearance.
And for the record, we do see, we do see the app, the requests are on, online. Just for the record, go ahead and introduce yourself as well as your counsel.
Commissioners, Ross, this is the authorized agent.
You're on mute.
What are you doing?
Can you hear me now?
Still muted, Mr. Shinzato.
Can you hear me now?
Mr. Shinzato, you wanna call in if you're having problems with your audio?
Okay.
The licensee number eight, agenda item number 18, saying that they can hear him, but we can't.
Can you hear them? We can hear you, but you can't hear us.
Oh, somebody can hear us.
Somebody can. Now you muted. Now it's on you.
Can you hear us all?
Yes.
Okay. Ross Shinzato, authorized agent. And on to my right is Debbie Michael Burger, agent for Arnold's and also the owner of King's Pub.
Okay, Mr. Shinzato, did you hear the request for continuance? Do you have any objection?
Well, I'm closing the location in need.
I'm sorry, we cannot hear you. Can you speak louder?
I'm closing the location and I just thought a great way to be able to get money back for the open bottles and the open kegs and the open six sacks. If you would allow to let me go ahead and buy. I know you talk about how we can get the vendors to come and pick up, but they're limited on what they will pick up along with the vendors being out of so much stuff. It'd be kind of nice to get some of the stuff that they're out of that I do have on the other location. I didn't want to do anything illegal or without your permission. And the establishment is closed and I'm just breaking everything down. I just thought it was a convenient, good idea, but I wanted to get your guys' permission. I write one check deposited in the King's Pub Blue Boy account to pay the remainder bills and close up the business.
Okay, Mr. Shinzato. Opposing counsel has requested a one-week continuance. Are you, I, it seems like your client is objecting to that continuance. Is that correct?
Well, it prevents me from moving stuff right now. There's stuff that is on. I guess I can shove it all in boxes.
Right now, Ms. Iko, the, the counsel for the other party is not able to make it to today's hearing and has requested a continuance.
Other party.
Objecting to the continuance.
Do, um, is it better I just not go ahead and do that? And, um, I don't understand why there would be, uh.
Well, Ms. Michael Burger, we've had this issue with your, with the ownership of your, of your company for many years. I've been on the council for many years and we've had to approve and waive many things because of the
You'd like to continue for one day.
The nature of your business and not being able to get rid of that other owner or member.
I'm so tired. I've been trying to close up and.
We'll, we'll go along with the continuance for one week.
Okay, you agree to the continuance for one week. Mr. Shinzato, please advise your client as well to that, keep in mind what Vice Chairman said, that this is not the first time she's appeared before us. So, um, the problem is being caused by your folks' business relationship or business structure of your company. So I would suggest if you don't want to have to keep getting our permission to do stuff like this, then to adjust that. Because I, like I said, Ms. Michael Burger, I've seen you here in front of us for years for these types of requests. Okay, so we'll see you folks back next week, okay?
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could make one correction to the request. Oh, it's, there's an error on the request.
We can barely hear you guys, Mr. Shinzato.
Okay, I'll wait till the next hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shinzato, can you hear us? Okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
I would urge you to reach out to Mr. Kyuchi. Try to resolve whatever dispute there is over the remaining inventory before next week. Maybe you can limit the dispute and hopefully resolve it in full. But please make the biggest effort to try to resolve this, okay?
We didn't know he was opposed to the transfer of the inventory.
But please do what you can and we appreciate it.
Okay, motion to continue agenda item number six, request number two two dash two five zero five four for one week. Second, it's been moved in second to continue agenda item number six, request number two two dash two five zero four, two five zero five four for one week. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Matter is being continued to next week. Thank you, Mr. Shinzato.
Thank you.
Thanks. Calling agenda item number seven, request number two two dash two five zero four four from Mr. Uyoka on behalf of Kahala Senior Living Community.
Afternoon, Chair, members of the commission. With your eye, Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Kahala Newey. Present to my right is Mr. Craig Court. He is the president and CEO of Kahala Senior Living Community, doing business at Kahala Newey. This is a request for waiver of the 11 directors of Kahala Senior Living Community, which is a 501(c)(3) corporation. They are unpaid volunteers and they do not see the, oversee the day-to-day operations of Kahala Newey. Mr. Court is responsible for that and he has submitted personal history and background information. We also requested this, this request applied to both pending club liquor license application and also a special legal license application of this.
Questions for Mr. Uyoka?
Mr. Uyoka, can you confirm for the record that none of the officers or directors of Kahala Senior Living Community have committed any felonies within the last five years?
Absolutely. No felony conviction whatsoever or arrest or.
And for the record, to the extent I look at your list, it seems to be outstanding members of the community.
Yes, thank you.
Thank them for their service.
Yes, yes, my, my, my question was purely, you know, ministerial.
Motion to approve request number two two dash two five zero four. It's been moved in second to approve request number two two dash two five zero four four. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Uyoka.
So much.
They're calling agenda item number eight, request number two two dash two five zero five three from Donna Nakamura, controller on behalf of Aqua Marine.
Good afternoon. Hello.
Good, I can't hear you.
Should we go? Good afternoon.
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Donna Nakamura. Good afternoon, Chair Hirai and members of the commission. I humbly request refund of fees as we have terminated operations of our Dolphin Star vessel and was sold on June 13, 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve request number two two dash two five zero five three.
Second, it's been moved in second to approve request number two two dash two five zero five three. Any objection? Any reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Request is approved. Thank you, Ms. Nakamura.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Chair, motion to approve the adoption of findings of fact, decision in order for agenda item number nine.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the adoption of findings of fact, decision in order for agenda item number nine. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Adoption of findings of fact and decision in order for agenda item number nine is approved. We'll wait for the licensees to come in for adjudication. You look shy. I was asking you. It's funny looking all the way down here like, wow, hi. Why don't you have a seat first and we'll go through the process. Are you here for agenda item number 10? Okay, let me call the agenda item. First, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Daniel Jacob, Deputy Corporation Counsel on behalf of the city and county of Kahala.
Okay, calling the first adjudication item, agenda item number 10, Abuyo Ibushi. Please introduce yourselves. What's your first and last names, please?
My name is Kawi Mataka.
Okay, and you are, what is your position with the licensees? You're a server and you are is the owner. Okay.
Or can you spell you guys' names for the record, please? Yeah.
K O R I?
Sheriff, your name?
Akira. A K I R A. K A W A.
Thank you.
Sergeant Jacob. Honor about July 31, 2020, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to obtain approval from the commission in writing within 30 days of any change in ownership of 25% or more of the stock, or any change in ownership resulting in the transferee becoming the owner of 25% or more of the outstanding stock in violation of section 281-41 sub I of the Hawaii Statutes.
At this time, you folks need to enter a plea so you can accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest to the charge.
Have a problem with the words?
Okay. To request a translator, Mr. Jacob.
No, no objection.
Thank you. All right. Motion to continue agenda item number 10 to the next available date.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number 10 to the next available date. Any objection? Any with reservations? Seeing none. Chair votes I. Agenda item 10 will be continued to the next available date for the translator.
Excuse me, Chair, for the record, can we get kind of interpreter? They'll be needing.
Japanese language.
Japanese, so thank you.
Thank you. The prosecutor will be in touch with you to reschedule. Okay, thank you.
They're calling agenda item number 11, Club 939, Ms. Oceana. Okay, calling agenda item number eleven, Club Nine Three Nine, Ms. Otsiana.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Ms. Otsiana, on behalf of the licensee, at this time, we will waive reading of the charges and enter plead of no contest.
And, um, Ms. Otsiana, to confirm, um, uh, there are five charges on your client would like to plead no contest to all five.
That's correct.
Okay, um, motion to accept the no contest, please, for, uh, charges for agenda item eleven, charges one, two, three, four, and five.
Second. It's been moved in second to, to approve the no contest fee for agenda item number eleven for all five charges. Any objection? Any reservations? See none, chair votes. I, the no contest fee is accepted.
Uh, Mr. Jacob, let's go through these ones, one by one.
A charge one regards to licensee employed two employees without being properly registered. This is a second violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars. And charge two, the licensee failed to ensure one of its employees had her certificate of registration readily available for inspection. This is the first violation. The recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars. Charge three, the licensee employed an employee dancer without employee being properly registered. This is a second time violation. Recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars. Charge four is licensee employed an employee without being properly registered. This is also a second violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars. For charge five, licensee failed to proper, or make proper time record entries for nine employees. This is also a second violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars. Um, my map, which I asked the commission to check, uh, is a grand total of two thousand six hundred dollars in fines.
Otsiana, where is your client?
Uh, I believe my client is creating its business. Um, I have spoken to them, um, about these issues. As the commission is aware, I don't tend to take on cases clients that have lots of violations. So we have had a discussion about the fact that these things need to be remedied easily. Um, I was informed that none of the employees who were, uh, not registered and the reasons for the citations are no longer employed at the establishment. Um, I am also currently working with, um, my client's, uh, general counsel to work on the time card issues and to ensure that the time card, time cards are properly maintained and entered. Um, so the, I have some hope that there is movement in a positive direction for this client. Um, he, they did bring me in specifically to help him clear up these issues like he's been having. Cause I know that there have been issues in the past with him, um, complying with some of the rules. And, and I think that going forward, he needs to be much more cognizant of the expectations that are imposed on him by having a license. He does understand the seriousness of these issues. We did have a conversation about how this continues. The commission may be inclined to suspend or revoke his license. He understands that, um, so I, you know, we're working on it.
I believe we did suspend his license.
Yes, it's already been suspended for thirty days. So I told him, once that happens, you know, it's much more likely the suspension will either be longer or it may be revoked in the future if he keeps this up. Um, my understanding is that these incidents may predate the suspension or may come around the same time, but we're not interested until after the suspension. So, um, I'm hoping that this clears up all of the outstanding issues that he has.
Chair, if it helps, a record I have shows that a license was suspended for a violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point six sub-B. I'm not sure what that is, but I could probably look it up quickly. The data violation for that was February ninth, twenty twenty.
I believe that may have, um, there may have been an employee, if I'm not mistaken, that was I think that was the issue that I recall.
It was under, underage then.
Yeah, so that person is also not employed with the, with the establishment any longer.
Um, well, his defense has been that, um, he's pled to us in the past, has always been that they're no longer there. Because we've asked, how did you remedy it? And his remedy has been to fire them or get rid of them. It still doesn't clearly remedy the situation because he continues to bring in people that he has no connection with, not an ID, not any clue on anything with those people, which we expressed the last time was a big problem. Right, and I asked them, I said, you do not ID them? Do they not provide anything to you? Are they employees? If they are, they're subject to I-NI requirements? What's going on? You know? So we got that deep into it the last time and he weirdly assumed the last time. Um, I have serious concerns about this, this licensee moving forward because of the disregard for the numerous uh, warnings as well as the suspension of his license that has already happened to him. And I'm sorry, Ms. Otsiana, you have this huge task. Um, and you're being punished right now. And, and he's not here to accept that punishment. You know, that's why I'm really curious to find out. You know, he's busy at his business. He may not have a business if he continues to operate this way. His business, um, this is a huge factor within his business module. If he could go without it, that would be great. Let us all off the hook. You know, then we don't have to keep hearing these issues with him. But, um, I'll attest and speak to that. I've been here a long time. I've seen this guy a long time. I've seen these issues with him. And I've never been happy with how it's, it's remedied. Um, and, and you can add that to the list of what you'll be discussing with him later as far as the, um, disappointed because of his laid-back approach towards these issues. They were never anything of any urgency to, to get done or to complete or get anything done, you know? So, um, I'm sorry because that's five charges and I, you know, um, a little frustrated with, with the situation and I think it's, um, important, uh, charges. I mean, nine, nine people on the clock and they don't have a time sheet. Is that our time card or there's no record of these people working for him? Is that what we're seeing?
Chair, is that, um, they were not properly registered with the commission. They were employees of the establishment. I believe the time card was one employee who failed to clock out when she left for the, the evening. Um, but for the registration issues, uh, my, again, my understanding is there was something not registered with the commission as required. And I completely understand and appreciate your concerns. I have the same concerns. I have the same concerns taking this client on in the first place. So we've had these, these conversations and he does understand that there's a lot at stake here.
Um, and I'm glad he brought in counsel because he's been representing himself for a long time now.
Um, yeah, I, you know that I respect you and I know that you don't usually take clients of this nature. Um, I feel the same way as, um, Chergan Aban, um, been very disappointed with this licensee in the past and been disappointed with his attitude when he has appeared with the commission, um, and does not appear to be thinking his violations seriously. Um, and I have a, I have a much more serious concern that if there is human trafficking going on at his business because of, that, that's what, that's how it begins, correct? Unregistered, meaning, do they have an ID? Where are they from? How old are they? And that's why we have these checks and that's why we have these rules. So that we can ensure the safety of employees and the public. That if there are predators out there, we want to know about it. Um, so, you know, that is my more serious concern is what is really going on at this place. And, um, I, I, I had hoped that the suspension would clean it up. But if that is not the case, you are very intelligent. You've worked before us before. You know where we're going. So I would, I would, I would speak to your client very seriously about what is actually going on at his business.
And, and I understand and, and appreciate very much the concerns that, that you have about this and what the commission has about this licensee. Um, I, I can say that, you know, with respect to the registration issues, again, my understanding is they were something not registered with the commission. Not that he had no information on record or that they were not properly employed. Um, it was simply, you know, failure to register them with the commission.
Well, the registration with us is the, is the, is the guarantee confirms that is, that is the case. You see what I'm saying?
I, I understand, um.
Why are they working? Why are they there? Why are they working on the floor if they are not registered?
Again, I believe, you know, that they had some issues maintaining their records properly. Um, I, I do appreciate that, you know, there are very good reasons for the registration requirements. Um, but I, again, I have assurances that, you know, the, the actual employment workers themselves are properly registered with the state, the payroll, um, service, you know, the unemployment insurance. That is all in place and that those entities do have the proper records that they need for each employee. Um, I have, you know, since taking off his client, required a double checking of all of their employment records and all of their time cards. And so we're in the process of going through all of those records and all of their procedures to ensure that things like this don't happen in the future. I understand the commission has given him many opportunities in the past. I mean, he's had some issues. Um, and my hope is that this is sort of his first step in the right direction. And that between myself and his general counsel, who is also a very reputable, very, um, experienced attorney, that we can kind of force him into the correct.
I would just note that given the history of violations, um, and the severity of these violations, I would expect to, to be able to see him and confront him, uh, directly with these questions. So, uh, if any of these arise in the future, I would, uh, recommend highly that he would be here with you.
Commissioner Buckley was kind of, I was saying the same thing, Chair. I would like to continue the penalty phase by the time we can have the licensee appear and perhaps any operational people who can answer our questions to get a better sense of what's the culture, what's really going on. Cause it's unfair to you and Ms. Otsiana to try to respond second, third hand. What happened, what did it happen?
I, I'm happy to bring the client in as well as, um, his general counsel. He's been working very closely with him and did bring me into representing him. And I believe between those two or we should have most of the answers to your questions. If there are any other individuals that might have more information, I'll make sure that they're here as well.
Well, they're, they're important as far as the penalty phase of it goes. So, um, I think that's a really good decision. Um, that, you know, in the past, we've just done a suspension or revocation. So in this situation, we're gonna, um, require he appear and not via Zoom. We're gonna require him to, to appear in person. We had Zoom issues with him the last time. So, um, I'm not gonna allow any miscommunication or, um, you know, him not appearing before. So the requirement is that the licensee will appear in person and be able to explain or come up with his plan to convince us that these five violations aren't gonna happen again or what he's, how involved he is in operations as far as remedying these five charges. And so.
Um, motion to continue agenda item eleven, um, for the penalty phase to.
Um, well, I guess depending on when that's available, I apologize. I am going to be out of this date for the last half of July. So depending on when it is, I, I mean.
I mean, we could set it for next week if you.
Um, yeah, next week. Um, motion to continue agenda item eleven for one, for the penalty phase.
Second. It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number eleven for the penalty fees for one week. Any objection? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you?
No objection.
Okay.
I'm sorry, um, shoot, I would think the motion would be more appropriately also required by the licensing to attempt and along with any operational people who can disclose the nature of the business and talk to them.
That is included in the motion.
Okay, so let me restate the approval then. Um, uh, continuing agenda item number eleven to the next available date with the verbiage provided by vice chairman as well as commissioner Miyashiro that the licensee attend in person as well as with any other key employees or personnel to assist in this matter. He continued for one week. Any objections? Any with reservation? See nine, chair votes. I, um, the agenda item number eleven will be continued for one week. Thank you, Ms. Otsiana, for coming out. Okay, calling agenda item number twelve, Club Cleopatra. Mr. Han?
Yeah. Hello.
Representing Cleopatra?
Yes.
Can you hear us fine? Can you hear us, Mr. Han?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, please introduce yourself and spell your last name.
Oh, yes, this is Anthony Han. I am, uh, just, uh, operating, uh, Club Cleopatra right now.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob.
You're welcome.
Chair, if you mind, I think you said twenty-ten. I just wanna, we have four files. I just wanna make sure I'm got the right one.
I'm in, I'm on agenda item twelve.
That's twenty-zero-one-two-one?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Han?
Um, yes.
Commissioner Miyashiro brought up a good point. I, I'm assuming I, you're in a vehicle. Are you, you are not driving, correct?
No.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and proceed.
Charge one, honor about June thirteenth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate record showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating AM or PM and the legal first name and surname of its employee, Mary Ann Almo, when that employee was on duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four sub-A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge two, honor about June thirteenth, twenty twenty, at three-twenty-five PM in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have this, the street and or primary entrances to the licensed premises unlocked during the time customers are on the premises in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-two point two of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Han, how would you like to plead as to charge one?
No contest, please.
And how would you like to please plead to charge two?
Uh, no contest, please.
Motion to accept the no contest, please, for charges one and two.
Second. They moved in second to accept the no contest fee for agenda item number twelve for charges one and two. Any objections? Any with reservation? See none, chair votes. I, no contest fee is accepted for agenda item number twelve.
Mr. Jacob, your recommendations, please.
In regards to charge one and the adequate time cards, this is a first time violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars. In regards to charge two regarding the primary entrance being locked, it's a first time violation. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Han, do you have any comment?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I was just like, uh, uh, I'm not gonna do any more about this kind of situation.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars and five hundred dollars for charges one and two for agenda item twelve.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two with a total penalty of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Any objection? Any with reservation? See none, chair votes. I, the fine has been approved. Seven hundred and fifty dollars will be, will be, will, is approved. Calling agenda item number thirteen, Club Cleopatra.
Mr. Han, please introduce yourself for the record again.
Yes, uh, this is Anthony Han. I'm the owner of the Club Cleopatra.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob.
Honor about May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee employed Marlene Argo and, and that section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said employee being properly registered with the liquor commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point five sub-A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Han, how would you like to plead?
No contest, please.
To accept the no contest, please, for agenda item fifteen.
It's been moved in second to approve the no contest fee for agenda item number thirteen. Any objections? Any with reservation? See none, chair votes. I, the no contest, please, accepted.
Mr. Jacob, your recommendation.
This is a first time violation. The recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Han?
Yes.
This is the same employee, correct?
Um, yes.
Oh, no, different employee. Okay.
Oh, it's different employee?
Okay, um, so it looks like you're having an issue with getting your employees registered with the commission. What are, what are you gonna be doing or what have you already done to correct that?
Yeah, though, oh, I'm just keep just, uh, the register, just the employees right now. But, you know, very difficult to find the employee nowadays and then.
Okay, um, so do you have a plan to ensure that your employees are registered with the commission before they are serving alcohol?
Yeah, sure. So we are every. Yeah, sure. So we are everything right now is that we just, before we serving all alcohol, we just, we just all employee right now.
All right, motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item thirteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number thirteen.
A chair, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize. It is three fifty.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number thirteen. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, treble to eye. The three hundred and fifty dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirteen. Calling agenda item number fourteen, Club Cleopatra.
I will note Mr. Han's appearance for the record for agenda item fourteen. Mr. Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor about July seventh, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate record showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating AM or PM and the legal first name and surname of its employee, Lynn Cabral, when its employee was on duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four sub A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Han, how would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest.
And to accept the no contest fee for agenda item fourteen.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest fee for the item number fourteen. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, treble to eye, the no contest fee is accepted.
Mr. Jacob?
It's a first time violation. Recommended fines two hundred and fifty dollars.
Han, you have any comment?
Um, I would just rebound, remind my employees of, you know, make sure everything is right, you know. Date and put the right numbers and names.
Violations are getting expensive for you, so I would recommend getting on top of it.
Yes, I will.
The recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number fourteen. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, treble to eye. The two hundred and fifty dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number fourteen. Calling agenda item number fifteen, Club Cleopatra.
We will note Mr. Han's appearance for the record again. Mr. Jacob, the charges, please.
Honor about December third, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee permitted liquor of any kind while on a bottle, glass, or other container to be open and readily consumable within the license premises before or after the hours established by the liquor commission to at two oh nine AM in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point two zero sub B of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county.
Mr. Han, how would you like to plead?
No contest, please.
And to accept the no contest fee for agenda item fifteen.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest fee for agenda item number fifteen. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, treble to eye, the no contest fee is accepted.
This is licensee's second violation. The first violation occurred on August twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, where the licensee paid six hundred and sixty dollars. The second violation, the recommended fine is eight hundred and forty dollars. This is a seven hundred and fifty dollar base fine plus ten dollars per the nine minutes after two AM.
Thank you. Mr. Han?
Yes. Um, actually, I, I, I didn't really know the situation. But first violation was in two thousand and nineteen. That was, uh, I didn't just operate that business yet. But two thousand and twenty, I just transferred my liquor license to my, under my name. And I believe one of my employee, after to finish, they supposed to clean all bottles. But she forgot to, she just didn't find, found one bottle of beer. That, that's why these things happen. So I, yeah.
Mr. Han, um, so the second time violation for open bottles after hours. Um, and there, this is numerous violations for failing to have registered employees working. In the past, we have suspended licenses for these types of violations. So I will warn you now that if we see you back again for these types of violations again, we will be looking at a suspension in the future.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Han, I'm sorry, Mr. Jacob, is the, um, what Mr. Han stated with regards to liquor just being left or whether customers and patrons within, within his bar?
Investigative reports show that investigators observed four unidentified males with a variety of alcoholic beverages in front of them. One of them was secured. It was a Michelob Ultra still cold with a touch of three forceful.
Okay, Mr. Han, did you hear that representation?
Um, yes.
Okay, so that's not what happened, yeah?
Right.
Okay, so that's, um, let's talk about this because I have serious concerns. Because are you present at the business? Do you, do you know with this violation, you, you state one thing and another thing happened? That's, that's serious. Because you're not aware of what's happening at, at your bar. How long have you owned this bar?
Um, actually, I just owned this bar around one year, but, uh, main thing is like pandemic time, I just took over this bar because previous owner was just asked me if I take over this bar, she gonna give it to me free liquor license for transfer for free. That's why, you know, I just tried to just make this place for, yeah.
Do you have someone experienced and qualified working within the liquor establishment?
Um, no, this time, first time. That's why I, I just hired one just lady who just has experience before.
But you have someone currently right now on staff who had liquor experience?
Yes.
Is she in a capacity of a manager? What is her capacity?
Right now, but she's a manager of the this bar, but main thing is like, she cannot just work off for full time. So I'm just looking for another, just a bartender. But she just, she can just work when you just two days. So, yeah.
So the rest of the days, who's there at the bar?
Yes, most, 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 uh, but we have all the bartender right now except Saturday. But I will, I, I already told about this situation to my employees about it. But it's not gonna happen again.
Hey, Mr. Han? Motion to approve the recommended fine of eight hundred and forty dollars for agenda item fifteen.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of eight hundred and forty dollars for agenda item number fifteen. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, treble to eye. The eight hundred and forty dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number fifteen. Mr. Han, keep in mind what Vice Chairman said about reappearing before us. So please seek help and get your bar in order or get your establishment in order to avoid these violations.
Okay, I will. Thank you very much.
In calling agenda item number sixteen, Hollywood Vietnam restaurant. Sixteen.
There, I'll represent that. I believe I had contact with an individual. It was my understanding that they were gonna deny the charge. However, if they are not here, then I would request default. Records indicate that they were served notice of hearing.
I see a Joseph Williams right now appearing. Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams, you need to connect your audio. So let's do this. Can you chat with Mr. Williams? And we'll go ahead and continue and then just move on to the next agenda item until he gets, he's ready to connect audio wise. Okay, we're gonna move on to agenda item number seventeen, Happy Days Chinese Seafood Restaurant. Please have a seat.
My name is Henry, D and L. My client is Lisa, ally, I say. Happy Days Restaurant.
Please have a seat, have a seat.
Jacob, the charges, please.
Charge one, honor about May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of an intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Carzima Santos at the license premise in violation of section two eight one, just seventy-eight, sub B one A of the Hawaii statutes. Charge, charge two, honor about May seventeen, twenty twenty-two, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to conspicuously post and expose to view convenient for inspections its license on the license premise in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-one of the Hawaii statutes.
Mr. Law, how would your client like to plead as to charge one?
Uh, no contest to charge one.
And as to charge two?
A no contest also. It's a personal fact.
Thank you. Motion to accept the no contest, please, for charges one and two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest fee for charges one and two for the item number seventeen. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, treble to eye, no contest fees are accepted.
Mr. Jacob, your recommendations, please.
Charge one was a result of the ACE project. The employee did not ask for ID, nor did the employee ask if the individual was twenty-one. This is licensee's first violation of this type. Recommended fine is one thousand dollars. In regards to fail to have a license posted for exposure to view is also a first violation. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Now, um, I know Happy Days Chinese Seafood Restaurant very well. I used to live down the road. My uncle used to frequent there all the time. How long have you folks been in business in Pinocchio?
Twenty-one years ago.
That's, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. As to charge one, this is a serious violation. This is a program that the commission runs to do, do a check on you folks. And it looks like you folks have failed this year. I, I go for a fact you've passed in, in years past. Um, because we haven't seen you. This obviously is a first time violation. So, um, does your client have any comment as to how this happened this time?
Yes, um, he was very busy that day. She was short-handed. A very tall, large male with facial hair came into the restaurant seated and he asked for beer. She was the waitress. And she noted that with that facial hair, and he was a, a large man. Uh, she assumed that he was over twenty-one. That's all I can say. That's why she's being no contest.
Honest mistake.
And the second charge.
Sorry, before we go in second, how old did she think he was?
More than thirty.
More than thirty.
Yeah.
And the reason I ask is maybe you'd create a policy that card everyone under forty. So there's no ambiguity. It's just protect, protect the.
To protect yourself.
Just a suggestion. I'm not telling you what to do.
Yeah. I said he was a rather large gentleman.
And I also, I also know this. As I get older, young people look younger and younger. So we might just check everybody. Yeah, and as to charge two, you folks didn't have your license posted?
She ordinary as it posted on the primitive. Somehow the license was in her drawer by the cash register. And he didn't have time to put it up. So honest mistake.
And it is posted now?
Yeah, definitely.
All right, um, my motion is gonna be to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for charge one. And issue a letter of reprimand for charge two.
Second.
They moved in second to approve, to approve the recommended fine for charge one of a thousand dollars and a letter of reprimand for charge two. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, treble to eye. The one thousand dollar fine will be, um, thank you, Mr. Law, you understand?
Okay.
And a letter of reprimand will be issued for charge two.
Thank you, sorry. We're happy you folks survived the pandemic. Glad to see you open still.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, let's go back to agenda item number sixteen. I see the licensee waiting there. What we call agenda item number sixteen. Hollywood Vietnam restaurant. Mr. Williams, can you hear us? Yeah, you're muted now.
Okay.
Yes, there we go. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I, okay. Ms., Mr. Williams, please introduce yourself for the record.
Uh, my name is Joseph Williams. I'm with Hollywood Vietnam restaurant.
Uh, Mr. Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor about May seventeen, twenty twenty-two, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Carzima Santos at the license premises in violation of section two eight one dash seventy-eight, B one A of the Hawaii statute.
Mr. Williams, how would you like to plead?
I would say not guilty.
Okay, so if you are going to deny the charges or plead not guilty to the charges, uh, we will need to schedule you for a contested hearing at a later date. Is that what you would like to be, would you like to contest this at a hearing in a, at a later date?
I believe so, yes. Because in a, for me, I don't mind paying the fine, but the, the sort of the, of, of the.
Hold on, Mr. Williams, you can deny the charge, you can accept the charge, or you can plead no contest. And if you plead no contest, you can provide an explanation to the commission at this time. But if you, if you put in a denial charge, we would need to reschedule it so that we can gain evidence and, and have a, a contested case hearing for it. So.
Not guilty, deny the charge.
Okay.
Mr. Williams, since you pled not guilty, wish to return for a contested hearing. We have a few procedures we require you to follow. Can you hear me okay? Okay.
Okay, fine.
Seven days before the hearing, both prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested hearing. Number two, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, each party's exhibits must be uploaded to the liquor commission's Google Drive by four o'clock PM on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished is available on the liquor commission's website. And I understand will be provided to you in writing as well. If physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the liquor commission and the other party know. As a reminder, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information. Do you understand generally what I just went through?
Uh, somewhat, if you don't mind, you know, if you email me the information. So I can maybe get a lawyer to look at it.
When about to administer the licensee.
Yes, he will get, he'll get the same instruction in a, in a letter with the rescheduled date.
Got it.
With that, I'm going to make the motion to continue agenda item sixteen to the next available hearing date for a contested hearing.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number sixteen for a contested hearing. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, treble to eye. Agenda item sixteen will be continued. You'll be hearing from us, Mr. Williams.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, calling agenda item number eighteen, Hotel Renew, Mr. Lee.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Terry Lee, appearing as counsel for Hotel Renew Management LLC, uh, which is the current holder of the temporary license. The notice of violations are issued to the prior licensee. Uh, and also in attendance is Adrian Perez, who is the former general manager, I believe, of Hotel Renew under the former ownership and license. Uh, we, I, I, we waive reading of the charges. Uh, plead no contest to all the charges uh, with an explanation as to charges two and three.
Um, I'm looking at agenda eighteen and I have uh, two charges this year and then you have a separate charge for agenda item nineteen. uh, two charges listed here and then you have a separate charge for agenda item nineteen. So, um, is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yeah.
The charges wanted to, okay.
Yeah, so for.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item eighteen, charges one and two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item eighteen for charges one and two. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie, no contest pleas are accepted.
Mr. Jacob, your recommendations, please.
In regards to charge one, this violation involves physical alterations to the licensed facility without prior approval from the commission. Uh, the licensee built a new bar counter. Um, this is a first time violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars. In regards to charge two, licensee failed to have a manager on the premises. This is a second time violation. Recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars. The first time violation was February seventh, two thousand nineteen when licensee paid five hundred dollars.
Mr. Lee, any comment?
Yes, so, uh, the only explanation I'd like to offer in the hope of mitigating the seven hundred and fifty dollar fine on charge number two is that the, um, the hotel actually ceased, uh, liquor service, uh, because of pandemic in March of two thousand twenty-one and never resumed liquor service until the date it sold the hotel to my client in November of two thousand twenty-one. And while that is not, you know, a defense to the charge, I, I, I submit it's a mitigating factor because they're not serving liquor. Um, so I, I would, you know, because my client potentially is responsible for the fine, but it, you know, didn't own the hotel and wasn't the licensee at the time. I would ask the commission to perhaps consider a letter of reprimand.
Um, when you say the hotel was not serving liquor at the time, was the hotel open for business?
It, it was open, but it was during the pandemic. And so I was told that they only had like a handful of guests, less than ten. And the staffing was down to three people, including Mr. Perez.
But there was a manager on duty.
There was. It's just that, you know, when I spoke to Mr. Perez about whether he, he recalls if he was there at that particular time when the investigator was there, uh, he, 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 he could not swear that he was there at the time.
Commissioners, any other questions? Uh, what I'll do is a, a motion to approve the recommended fine for charge one of five hundred dollars. And, um, to a reduced final five hundred dollars for charge two for a total of one thousand dollars.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one. And a reduced fine of five hundred dollars for charge two with a total penalty of one thousand dollars. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie, the one thousand dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number eighteen. Thank you, gentlemen. You're on nineteen. Oh, I'm sorry. You guys have nineteen. Okay. Calling agenda item number nineteen, Hotel Renew.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Terry Lee appearing as counsel for the current temporary licensee, Hotel Renew Management LLC. Also in attendance is Adrian Perez, who's the former general manager of the hotel under the prior ownership and the prior license. Uh, waive reading of the charge and plead no contest with the same explanation as the earlier one.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item nineteen.
Second. It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number nineteen. Any objections? Any reservations see none, charitable tie, no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Jacob.
This violation occurred on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, a day before the previous case. Uh, licensee failed to have a manager on the premises. This is also a second time violation. Recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollar. Again, uh, first violation was on February seventh, two thousand twelve, where the licensee paid five thousand in two thousand nineteen.
Um, all right, so same explanation, Mr. Perez, you are not sure if you were on site at the time?
Um, well.
So go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Um, yes, uh, actually, the April fifteenth, there was a, um, there is a, uh, event that took place. There was a fire at the hotel. Um, so I was there late, but, um, I believe I was actually helping with some of the guests that we had to relocate to the adjacent property at, uh, the, um, Aston Waikiki. Uh, that was the only explanation, but, uh, yeah, I don't believe I was there when they came. I, I think it was later in the evening.
A motion to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars for agenda item number nineteen. Any objections? Any reservations seeing none, charitable tie, the seven hundred fifty dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number nineteen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty, Kokoa Market.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Ms. Ching, yes.
Hi, I'm Donna Ching. I'm on the board of Kokoa Market.
Sir Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor about May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to notify the commission in writing of the name, age, and place of residence of an officer or director to wit Carol Jackson and Clifford Chang within thirty days from the date of election of such officer or director in violation of section two eighty-one dash forty-one sub I of the Hawaii Statutes.
Um, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob.
Uh, this is licensee's second violation. Recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the first violation was May twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, where the licensee paid five hundred dollars. I'll also note that, um, you know, we look back five years on determining aggregate offenses. Licensee barely escaped that five year. There was a, um, violation for the same reason, May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, where the licensee paid five hundred. So again, this is technically a second violation within the last five years. Um, recommended by the seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Ching, you have any comment?
I, I do. So, you know, having listened to the liquor commission's hearing and, and watched what was happening with Kahala Nui, so I don't know. For those of you who are, um, aware of what Kokoa Market is, it's a nonprofit natural foods cooperative on King Street near the corner of university. And, um, you know, we've been in business for a little bit over fifty years. I mean, our financial position right now is we're on the brink of insolvency. We nearly went bankrupt in two thousand eighteen and COVID has not helped us at all. Um, any mitigating or, you know, adjustment you can make to the fine would be greatly appreciated. And, and in our defense, you know, as with Kahala Nui, like we have, our board members are all volunteer unpaid people. And we have made a good paid effort to submit in a timely manner when we have changes to our composition of our board members and so forth. But to be fair, the two people who failed to meet the thirty-day deadline were Clifford Chang and Carol Jackson. They had served before on the Kokoa Board and were under the impression that they could just, that their existing liquor commission application would be, um, you know, valid. And I believe that there was some back and forth or communication with our office manager, Margaret Croxford, to the effect that, okay, if you pay this, you know, re- recovery or, um, retrieval fee, we can pull Carol's old, um, file and whatever. And there was a lot of back and forth with that. And, and to be frank, you know, our labor situation is so terrible that we're just completely overwhelmed. And so, you know, we're, there's absolutely no question that we did miss the deadline, but we are a nonprofit. We are barely scraping by. A seven hundred and fifty dollar fine would be really backbreaking for us at this time. We have nearly not enough cash flow to make our payroll or rent payments every month. So any, you know, we would appreciate a letter of warning now that we know that, as I just saw has happened with Kahala Nui, that we can actually ask for a waiver of submitting these things. Because when we do have board members coming on and off, it is really difficult to get the notary and to get everybody to fill out the applications and get the stuff in thirty days. Because, as I said before, we're all nonprofit, all non-paid, all volunteers. And the two people that got their stuff in late were prior board members, I myself, and recently reinstalled to the board. And I also thought that I could have my old application and, you know, information used and was informed to know. So we ran, you know, around to try to make that deadline too. So, you know, in the future, now that we know that it's possible for a nonprofit to just say, hey, can we just waive this requirement for board members? Because we're constantly getting people on and off. And, you know, none of us are profit taking from the business. And, you know, none of us have felony records and all of that. And it's just the same people over the last thirty years. It's probably been the same board members coming on and off. Because we're just, that's the nature of our, um, organization. So any consideration that the commission can make to help us to keep our doors open at this point. It's just, it's a very difficult financial time for us.
Um, you know, I was present on the commission the last two times that this issue, um, this violation came up for Kokoa Market. Um, and you folks have had other violations as well. And your explanation is the same explanation that I've heard from almost every person representing Kokoa Market for the entire time I've been on this commission, which is, I would say, on eight years now. So it sounds like you folks are maybe not benefiting from having this license and may want to think about canceling it.
Yeah, maybe.
Sounds like it's a.
We're not serving alcohol. We're a.
Burden for you folks. Um, it sounds like you working off of volunteers. It's hard for you to meet the deadlines. Um, you know, we've heard many of the same story. And every single person from Kokoa Market that appears before the commission is very overwhelmed. Or, you know.
So could I ask?
We understand, we understand that you're a nonprofit. I used to go to Kokoa Market all the time when I went to University of Hawaii. Um, so I'm very familiar with your organization, very familiar with your establishment. And you don't sell very much alcohol. Is that correct?
Yeah, we sell, you know, beer and wine and it's not a significant, you know, amount of sales. It's like a couple thousand dollars a month. But, um, but I, could I just ask for clarification? When Kahala Nui came in and said, hey, can we get a waiver on submitting all of our board members' information for this thing? How, how, how does that work for them that they? And I, and I ask because I'm sorry, ma'am, at this time I can advise you, but you can, um, you know, to, tomorrow during normal business hours, contact the administration and try to get some guidance on how you folks could better manage this and what types of permissions you can ask, um, the commission for. But at this time, we need to adjudicate this violation. So, um, Commissioners, do you have any assistance for me?
Ms. Ching, I just want to clarify that the request is different than what this penalty is for. So it's not the same thing. Just so you're clear on that. And I do share Commissioner West chairman's comments. Um, want to remind you that holding a license is a privilege. It comes with a lot of obligations. And you might want to revisit with your board whether it makes sense to continue.
Right.
The, you know, an imposition of a fine of whatever amount is, and your time is, excuse me, may not be worth the privilege of holding that license. So again, you may want to revisit that.
See, what I'm gonna do is, uh, my motion will be to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars. However, we will suspend collection of that seven hundred fifty dollars, provided no similar violations happen within a one-year period. If one similar violation happens within that one-year period, that seven hundred fifty dollar fine will be collectable in addition to any other fines that be by this commission.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Second.
They moved in second to approve, um, to approve the seven hundred fifty dollar fine. However, collection of the seven hundred fifty dollar fine will not be collectable unless there is another similar violation as per and the verbiage provided by, by this charity. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie? Thanks, Ms. Ching.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We're calling agenda item number twenty-one, Royal Cunia Country Club. Ms. Perez.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and the members of the liquor commission, I am Dinah Perez, representing Conra- Con- Royal Cunia Country Club. Dinah, D I N A H P E R E Z.
Sir Jacob, the charge, please.
Honor about August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the license premises who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Perez, how would you like to plead?
No contest, ma'am.
And to accept the no contest plea.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty-one. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob.
So first time violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Perez, any comment?
Thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-one. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie, the two hundred fifty dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number twenty-one. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Royal Cunia Country Club.
Ms. Perez, introduce yourself again.
Okay, uh, I am Dinah Perez, D I N A H P E R E Z, representing Royal Cunia Country Club, Inc.
Sir Jacob.
Honor about September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee employed Leon Nila Tabolto in section, in the section of the license premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said employee improperly registered with the liquor commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point five sub A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Uh, Ms. Perez, how would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest, ma'am.
Just accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the, uh, to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty-two. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob.
So first time violation, the recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Perez, do you have any comment?
Uh, yeah, we will accept the charges. Thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-two. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie, the three hundred fifty dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number twenty-two. Thank you, Ms. Perez.
Okay, thank you too.
Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Tiana Cafe and Karaoke LLC. Mr. Chung.
Good afternoon, members of the, of the commission. Matthew Chung on behalf of the licensee, who is not present. Um, I have been talking with Mr. Corporation Counsel, whose name just escapes my mind. Um, and we are trying to resolve it. I do not have authority to enter a no contest plea uh, as I haven't been able to talk to my clients. So I would ask to move this hearing to the next available date. And I'm, my inclination is we will enter a plea to both charges, but I wanted to get feedback from the prosecutor uh, concerning his recommended fines as well as a, uh, liquor report on part of the evidence.
Okay, so Mr. Chung, you're requesting to continue this agenda item to the next available date?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Jacob, you have any objection?
No doubt.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-three to the next available.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-three to the next available date. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie? Agenda item twenty-three will be contin- will be continued to the next available date.
Thank you very much.
Agenda number twenty-four, Tiana Cafe and Karaoke LLC.
Um, Matthew Chung on behalf of the licensee, members of the commission, same request as in case number twenty-three.
Sir Jacob.
No doubt.
Motion to continue agenda item number twenty-four to the next available date.
Second. It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-four to the next available date. Any objections? Any with reservation seeing none, charitable tie? Um, agenda item twenty-four will be continued. Thank you, Mr. Chung.
Thank you.
Before we call the next agenda item, um, let's take a short recess. I think it's warranted. Um, let's do a fight, a quick five-minute recess for potty break, whatever, gotta be done. Agenda item number twenty-five, American Renaissance Academy.
Charlie. Damon Hudson, American Renaissance Academy, D A I M O N H U D S O.
Damon Hudson, American Renaissance Academy, D-A-I-M-O-N-H-U-D-S-O-N.
Did you?
Yeah, I guess I'll introduce Charles Stewart, J-E-W-I-T-T, as witness.
Yeah, Mr. Hudson, my recollection is that you either pleaded not guilty or you denied the charge. Is that generally accurate?
Yes.
And are you ready to proceed with a contest hearing?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Jacob, are you prepared to proceed?
Yes.
How many witnesses do you intend to call?
One.
And Mr. Hudson, how many witnesses do you intend to call?
Two.
Does any other part, do any other parties request the exclusionary rule, which means a witness who's gonna testify should not be in the hearing?
Um, no. No, sir.
Okay, you know, I will note, um, I apologize, I did not receive names of the individuals that you were gonna have testified to that.
I sent them through the email uh to uh
Did you respond to send to me?
Um, I sent you receipt on that email.
When did you send the email, Mr. Hudson?
Uh, two weeks ago.
Okay. Um, who are your witnesses?
I have Charles Jewett and Rob Ramsey.
Rod?
Yeah.
R-L-B. Rob Ramsey.
I won't object.
Okay, um, you're okay proceeding, Mr. Jacob?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Hudson, more for your benefit than Mr. Jacob, because he's heard this before. I'm gonna go through some of our housekeeping roles. Both parties have the opportunity to make an opening statement with the city going first. The city then has the opportunity to present evidence in support of its case, followed by the licensee. During either presentation, the commissioners also have the opportunity to ask questions of the witnesses. Both parties have the opportunity to cross-examine the witnesses and also to present rebuttal evidence with the city going first. While the presentation of all evidence, including rebuttal evidence, both parties have the opportunity to make final arguments with the city permitted a final argument and rebuttal. Do you understand, Mr. Hudson, the general rules?
Yes, sir.
And I know Mr. Jewett has got to this proceeding, so I think we have a general understanding as well. And Mr. Jacob, any questions on the procedure? Okay, we'll begin with opening statements. Starting with you, Mr. Jacob.
Um, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Um, on November second, two thousand nineteen, licensee sold intoxicating liquor or provided intoxicating liquor to a minor. I believe to get some procedural things out of the way, I believe the licensee is going to stipulate that this act did deed and happen. That the individual was a minor, that the individual was provided alcohol. We all know that HRS prohibits licensees from providing liquor to a minor, but that's not an issue today. What is an issue, and I'm gonna read directly from the statute, is that a licensee shall be guilty of the violation, and now I'll begin to read. Provided that the consumption or sale of liquor to a minor shall not be deemed to be a violation of this subsection if, in making the sale or allowing the consumption of any liquor by a minor, the licensee was misled by the appearance of the minor in attending circumstances and honestly believing that the minor was of legal age and the licensee acted in good faith, semi-colon, provided further that it shall be incumbent upon the licensee to prove that the licensee so acted in good faith. So again, I'll represent that I believe the licensee will stipulate that it was a minor and that the minor did possess alcohol. What evidence will show is that when liquor commission, liquor commission investigators arrived, they noticed that individuals looked youthful in age. They approached the individuals that look youthful in age and started asking whether they're twenty-one. Quickly upon obtaining an ID from one of the individuals, upon asking the individual to verify the information on the ID that provided to the liquor commission, uh, the individual wasn't able to, to um tell the, the information on the license, uh, the fake license that was provided to the liquor investigator. At that time, the liquor investigation issued the citation to the licensee for providing um liquor. It is upon the licensee tonight to demonstrate that they proved that um in good faith, that they were misrepresented by the attenuate circumstances and were misled into believing this individual was a minor. However, again, uh liquor commission showed up and quickly identified these individuals as looking youthful in age. Had the licensee uh questioned the individual who presented the fake ID and asked to verify the information on the presented ID, they would have quickly learned that this individual was not twenty-one and therefore would have refused service, should have refused service. And that is my closing, our opening statement. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, um, Commission. Thank you so much for allowing me to have this day to explain the situation that we dealt with. And the relevant statute section, chapter eighty-six, section three dash eight-six dash one zero one dash five one A states that the relevant part that no licensee shall sell or service a minor or allow for the consumption of liquor by a minor to ensure the safety of its guests, customers, licensee is responsible for the proper checking of personal identification of any person wishing to purchase liquor prior to the selling or serving of that liquor. Moreover, subsection B of the same provision provides that the requirements of a valid form of identification that a licensee must observe when inspecting the identification provided by the person wishes that wishes to purchase liquor. Specifically, the subsection provides that a valid form of identification for the purpose, purposes of purchasing liquor under this license via government-issued ID that is unaltered, undamaged, and laminated. At a minimum, the com- commission requires its licensee to verify all government identifications being used for the purchase of liquor, bear the name of the issue's identity, date of issuance, expiration date, date of departure from the, from the state of Hawaii, date of birth, a photograph, a signature, and a statement that the identification is valid only in the county of Honolulu. Here, we, the academy, on the date in question, had compiled with all, had complied with all requirements set forth under this section by the commission, and in doing so, had acted responsibly. The person at is, that issued, that, that issue presented what appeared to be a valid government-issued identification card. As a matter of policy, we applied additional security measures such as black light testing on the ID card to inspect for holographic stickers, a common indicator of all valid government-issued IDs. I uh also like to state that in a concert set where you have uh anywhere from eight hundred to sixteen hundred people coming in that you're checking IDs, that we go through rigorous examinations that are given to each card checker to make sure that the picture on the ID matches the picture that we're looking at, that everything within that ID is exactly what is meant to be from these sections inside um your own codes. In this case, this particular individual's picture was the same, her name was the same. The only thing that was different on this ID was her age, which she was twenty years old, not twenty-one, and that she had an Arizona address, and that's what the investigator asked was, can you give me your address? So in that case, they didn't ask for the address, but all the other things that we had to hit, we did, and I brought witnesses to be able to testify to that.
Um, before we proceed, um, Mr. Jacob, you have one exhibit?
Correct.
And Mr. Hudson, do you have any exhibits?
Uh, just the ID that's at question.
Okay, the ID is part of the state or prosecutor's exhibit. Do you have any objection to the commission accepting the prosecution's exhibit A in evidence?
Yes.
You have, you object?
No, I do not have any objection.
Then the commission will accept the prosecution's exhibit A in, in evidence. Um, with that, Mr. Jacob, you can call your first witness.
Thank you. And before I call my first witness for the record, if I can have the licensee stipulate, agree to the stipulation that indeed it was a minor and indeed liquor was provided by the licensee to the minor.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me. Um, there was a representation by Mr. Jacob that the fact that the person possessing alcohol was a minor is not in dispute. Is that accurate?
Not that, not that.
Okay, so
Well, we did not know that at the time, so we did not knowingly or willfully serve alcohol to a minor.
Okay, this is helpful. I appreciate the, the agreement or the lack of objection, so we're not gonna concentrate on how old this person was and whether she had alcohol. Okay, so go ahead.
I'll call Frederick Cruce.
Will you sit down? Can I swear you in? Do you swear that the testimony you gave at today's hearing will be the truth, spoken, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Frederick Cruce, could you please state your name for the record?
Frederick Cruze.
And where are you employed?
I'm currently employed with the Honolulu Liquor Commission as a liquor control investigator.
Can you tell me what your duties are as a liquor control investigator?
I'm responsible for conducting compliance inspections within the city and county of Honolulu.
As part of your duties, did you visit American Renaissance Academy on November second, two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
And who are you with?
Uh, liquor control investigator, Arthur Tupola.
What kind of event was this?
It was a rave-type concert.
I object to that.
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, you can object, but just for your knowledge, we really don't enforce evidentiary rules, but if you want to object, you're free to do so.
Sure.
What kind of inspection did you complete at the licensed premises?
Uh, we conducted an inspection of the licensed beer garden area for minors in possession or minors consuming liquor.
Uh, did you observe any violations during your inspection? Yes, can you please explain how that observation came about?
LCI Tupola and I were conducting an inspection of the licensed beer garden area. We observed four individuals who appeared youthful in appearance, three of whom had clear plastic cups in their possession.
Did you see these four youthful individuals drink from the cups?
I observed one individual, Jade Kui, uh consume a yellow-colored liquid from the clear plastic pop, cup she had in her possession.
Um, did you, uh, did you approach the individuals after you observed that?
Yes, LCI Tupola and I approached the individuals who identified ourselves verbally and by displaying our badge, and we asked the individuals for their IDs.
And can you tell me what happened in that conversation?
I was informed by LCI Tupola about this conversation with uh Jade Kui.
And is that a conversation represented in Mr. Tupola's investigative report?
Yes, it is.
What is your understanding of that conversation?
LCI Tupola asked her information, asked her questions about the information on her driver's license that she provided, and she couldn't answer the questions asked. At which point, she told LCI Tupola that she was twenty years old with the date of birth of July fourteenth, nineteen ninety-nine.
Um, are you familiar with whether there was any pictures taken that night?
Yes.
Um, I now have shared my screen. Um, can you represent whether this is the individual that was determined to be underage?
Yes, that is.
And are you aware whether the license now provided is the license the individual did provide to investigators?
Yes, that is the one she provided.
And what did you learn about this license?
Uh, that the date of birth was fraudulent. Her date of birth was July fourteenth, nineteen ninety-nine.
And to your knowledge, how long did it take investigator Tupola to determine that this was a fake ID?
On, who is uttering so that?
He asked her to repeat her address?
And she could not.
And that's when, did she make an admission at that time, to your knowledge?
Yes, she did. She told LCI Tupola that she was twenty years old.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Hudson, you can cross-examine the witness.
Um, when, when you approached the four individuals, were the other three of age?
Yes.
And were they also looking as young as the, as the girl that was underage?
Yes.
Okay, um, when, when you um examined this ID, did you determine it was a fake ID when you looked at it or after you asked for the address?
That was LCI Tupola's. He was the one who spoke there about the ID.
Okay, so you just said to the commission that, um, that, that it was a fake ID. Did you, was it determined it was a fake ID when you looked at it first? Or was it determined it was a fake ID after you asked her and questioned her?
LCI Tupola was on the question there.
Okay, I, I just want the commission to know he's not answering my question, and they don't have an answer to that.
For the witness.
Um, when you charged this client or this, this, this girl Jade, did, did you charge her for having a fake ID?
No, she was charged for consumption.
And so why, why wouldn't you charge for having a fraudulent government ID?
I'll object on that. I know the commission won't accept it, but I don't believe that is relevant to the case at hand.
You can still answer the question.
Maybe if you repeat the question.
Why did you not charge Ju with having a false government ID?
You can't say you don't know.
And Jade was cited for, I believe it was a minor in possession, is that correct?
Consumption.
Minor in consumption of alcohol. Did you call HPD to come down and, and cite her for that?
No, I issued the criminal citation.
Okay.
For the complaint, so I'm sorry.
Is, is that common practice, or do you involve HPD in these cases?
Uh, that's common practice. We issue the complaint and summons for a minor consuming or in possession of liquor on a licensed premises.
Okay. Now, when someone inside a licensed establishment is identified of having a fake government ID, is it common practice for an investigator to give it back to that individual that was cited?
Depends if it was used in the purchase of liquor.
And this is obviously a case where it was used in her receiving alcohol. My question to you is, why did you give her back her fake identification so she can go the next night and go into another establishment and do the same thing that she did to us?
I'll object, um, assuming facts not on the record. I don't believe my witnesses testified that he did or did not take the fake ID.
Could you rephrase your question, Mr. Hudson?
Sure. Do you, are you in possession of this ID? So where is the ID?
I don't know.
Mr. Hudson, I'll, I'll remind you, the issue is interpretation of the statute and whether
I understand, these are just things I, I, I've been asking and I haven't gained answers for, so I'm just, I, for, for my own understanding of how the commission operates and its investigation body, I'm just, I'm, I'm very interested in these, and this is the only time I've been able to talk to an investigator about it, so.
Okay, I don't think this is the proper forum, and I think you have to go to the administration to find out what the policies are.
Sure, sure. So I, yeah, I, I, but ju- just for that, I just wanted to know, do we have the physical ID on him?
I think that's his, he doesn't know.
Yeah. I have no more for the question.
Mr. Jacob, any, uh, re- direct? Is there any questions for the witness?
I do have a question. Um, um, I'm looking at the ID here and um it's, there's clearly an expiration date listed on it. Um, and I, that's the way I would identify this as a fake ID. Did you folks make a note of the expiration date? All right, just wondering. Thank you.
I have a question as well, too. Um, just so I can get a, um, an idea of the setting in this beer garden, approximate how much people were there?
I can't recall. It's time to mission. Well, I'll follow up on the chair's question. Was it, in your best recollection, over five hundred attendees?
Yes, Commissioner.
I know, this is what I do as a lawyer, but would you say it's over 1,000? And again, just your best recollection.
In the license premises?
Or just license premises attendees?
Maybe not over 1,000.
Okay, somewhere between 500 and 1,000.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, your excuses witness, thank you for. So Jacob, you do not have any further witnesses?
I do not, thank you.
Do you have any other evidence besides this of a day?
No, I do not.
Does the city rest?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hudson, you can go ahead with your first witness.
I'm gonna call Charles to, to.
I swear you in. Do you swear that the testimony you give today's here will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Charles, how, how long have you been checking identifications here in Honolulu? Yeah.
I've been doing this for 35 years in Hawaii, checking IDs. My guys have been doing it a lot longer than I have. I don't check IDs.
And at, at this event, were all the protocols put in place to make sure that we would not have minors?
Yes.
Inside our licensed area?
Yes.
Can you run me through what you do to make sure that we do not have minors inside the licensed areas that we have events?
The ID checkers, all of whom had at least 15, 10 to 20 years, at least 10 years, have worked at multiple venues, worked at multiple establishments, I've owned or operated. We have ID checking books, you go back and check, sometimes you get them from out of country, out of state, and look and check these things. You make sure the main things are, again, picture, matches, person standing in front of them, and date of birth makes them over 21. You look at the usual things you look for, doesn't have a hologram, is a state-issued ID. All of the things that ID checkers know to check.
And in this event, do you recall the number of, of individuals that were in the licensed area? Approximately?
In and out, usually between 350 to 800-ish in the ice cream.
Right.
Because the overall space was much bigger.
Right, right. And in that particular night, when, when this incident occurred, were you present?
I was.
And can you give me a an understanding of how that event went through from when the investigator notified or found that, that they had a minor and, and how that, how that process went?
The event was smooth, right until that point, and, you know, to the investigator's point, they did look, everyone was young. They, they specifically dress up in costumes to look young. But I agree or not, that's a matter. We came up when he was questioning.
Jade.
And she was in a state of panic, started crying, saying she should have a panic attack, and then agreed to actually show her real ID, which the investigator, I believe, compared to this one. The only difference was one is Hawaii, date of birth, and address. It was an excellent ID. It had a hologram. It had everything on there that we are requested to see and show. We requested that it be confiscated and not handed back to us. We requested for HPD to them. We were denied again, again, and again. The investigator stated they couldn't remember where, where it was. I specifically saw him hand it back to Jade. We requested that not happen. She was sent on her way. We took her off the premises, issued her C.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes, Mr. Jewett, you've been around the block with the liquor commission quite a few times, is that correct?
Okay, I'll take that. That's, that's fair.
You're fair about, you're fairly knowledgeable about liquor commission laws and the liquor commission transcript.
That's good.
And you're well aware that there are fake IDs in existence out there, correct?
Oh, yes.
Is it appropriate to ask questions about an ID that is provided from someone who is youthful in appearance?
Again, everyone looks youthful, youthful in appearance at not just these events, whether they be reggae events or rock and roll events or EDM events. They all look youthful in appearance.
So is it your testimony tonight that it's never appropriate to ask questions about IDs presented from youthful individuals?
That is not.
Then, then when is it appropriate to ask questions about an individual's ID that they present when they look youthful?
On occasion, if they can't state their name or simple stuff like that. My ID checkers know to, they do it better than I do. They've done a long time. They look, check them, ask you proper things. First thing is, if it doesn't have all of the markings and looks like a fake ID, that's where you definitely need to double-check, double-check. If it's simply laminated, if it's, doesn't have the right weight of paper. My ID checkers used to come to liquor commission and train liquor commission. Or the other way around, they come and check them.
What was your specific involvement that night?
I was overseeing the venue for.
You mentioned earlier that people look youthful because they're in costume. Do you know whether the individual who was found to be minor was in costume?
You saw the picture. I'll answer that. That seemed like a costume.
Direct the commission's attention.
I mean, as a man, I consider that not every dress.
Were you the one checking IDs that night? Who was checking IDs that night?
Four or five of our regular ID checkers.
How many people were at the event?
4,600.
You mentioned that there's ways to detect proper IDs such as black lights. Did the individuals checking IDs that night have black lights? Do you have any evidence demonstrating that the individuals had black lights? You also said that you had ID books that show different state IDs. Were those books on present that night? And do you have any evidence demonstrating that the individual checking IDs had those books?
I do not.
Do you know?
Didn't you throw those away? They're done annually, right?
Hold on, Mr. Hudson, let him answer the question, and so we gotta keep some order here.
Did, did you personally question anybody about their ID that night? Do you know whether any of your people checking IDs questioned anybody about their ID that night?
Yep, we do have, same thing, we have, our guys, once they're done checking everyone's IDs in, they stay on premise, going around randomly checking.
And do you, do you have any proof that the people checking IDs that night were asking additional questions, scrutinizing IDs that were provided from youthful looking people? I have no further questions.
Mr. Hudson, you do have the opportunity to ask further questions.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, with, with regards to the, the, the books that you, that you were questioned on there, are those annual books and get reinstated every year? And so when this violation occurred, it was in 2019. Do, do you not throw those books away and get the most updated information for those? Okay, no further questions.
Can I share, is any questions for the witness?
Yes. I also have a question.
Mr. Jewett, if you could refer to exhibit E. And we're looking at the ID in question. My eyes don't serve me well, but can you tell me what the expiration date is on that ID?
Don't serve me great either. 714, is that a 51?
It's either 51 or 61, is the exact question I was gonna ask as well.
You can take it for 51 or 61, but this would be a government-issued ID that would be valid for 50 years.
There's no licenses that are issued for 50 years, and Arizona, the easy check would show you that it's issued for, it's good for 12 years. In Hawaii, it's good for 10. I also checked IDs for a number of years, and that's one of the first things I was taught to look for. That if there's an expiration date outside of 12 years, it's probably fake, and then you should ask more questions.
I have one follow-up question to that. You, did you mention that you had checked her actual ID?
The, they checked, sorry, the investigator. The investigator just showed up, did check their actual ID.
So you didn't personally, or, or your team didn't personally?
No, we weren't allowed to access it. We had no clue she had any other ID on her, because our assumption was that she was.
The only follow-up question I had is, so ID checkers are only at the main entrance to the liquor premises area, or is there people also checking or asking questions at the bar with beer, when alcohol is served?
No, once they're, once they're in, they're in. And then once everyone's actually into the event, one stays out front, catches any stragglers, and the others wander through the.
And how many total people did you have that night checking IDs and wandering after?
I think it was six that night. Yeah.
Okay, that's all the questions.
I, I have one kind of a catch-on, Mr. Jewett. So my understanding, based on your testimony, is that you had a handful of ID checkers, you personally did not check any IDs, but as we sit here today, you don't know who, if anyone checked this person's ID?
Everybody coming in.
I don't know, but you don't know who on your staff?
Well, yeah, we have the witness here, we haven't got to them.
The person who actually ID'd this particular Jade Kui?
No, he, he was, he was at the, he was ID-checking at the, at the front, running that area.
We can, we can ask that witness later, but what I'm getting at is, did you do any investigations to determine who from your staff checked this Arizona ID? For Jade Kui? I mean, it seems almost impossible.
Yeah, it, it, okay, there's 46, 4600 people coming through, and a lot weren't of age, only those that were in there. Everyone was checked, but that one's, that one in there.
Have, and any other, any other questions, Commissioner?
Sorry, I have just one more clarifying question. You had mentioned some of the procedures that you take to check IDs, such as the hologram, date of birth, name. Was the expiration date part of your typical procedure in checking IDs?
It would be.
Excuse us, witness, thanks for your time. Mr. Hudson, you can call your.
Okay. Rob Ramsey?
Do you swear that the testimony you give today's here will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Rob, on, on the item question, were you present on, on site?
Yes, I was.
And what was your role?
I was the overall site manager, bar manager.
And during that, did you witness this event?
Yes.
Can you describe what happened?
Of as far as?
The, 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 the situation with the investigators and Jade U that had the ID?
So my understanding was, I received real call, I was in the courtroom at the time that there was the commission on site, that there was an individual that was underage that was found with a false ID. When I arrived, Charles, Mr. Jewett was already on-site with the commissioners, they had the individual pulled aside with the fake ID. They were questioning her. Mr. Jewett was already with the commissioners, also being a part of that, I did see them with two side-by-side IDs. I also did over here, one of the things that I did over here was, Charles, Mr. Jewett, asked the commissioners to confiscate the ID and also call HPD to have whatever happened with that. That's one of the things that I did notice. I did not get to stay for the complete altercation, whatever happened, to see what the follow-up was, because I did get called away for another incident that had happened. But that's what I did witness, but I know I did see that there were two commissioners on-site, they did have the individual pulled aside, and Chip was there as well.
Now, when, when the patrons come through and they represent themselves as being 21 or over, what is the, the procedure to distinguish the 21 and overs from the, you know, the 20, 20 and unders?
Okay, so basically, in a festival setting like that, we have shoots where the people, the, the individuals come in, and then we have our ID checkers come in, they present their IDs. The, our ID checkers, which Mr. Jewett already mentioned, all pretty well versed in checking IDs. They're, they're the ones that we've used at each of our different venues for all these years. They checked their IDs. We have one individual, each of these individuals checks IDs, we have a second individual with actually wristbands, the 21 and over, once they've been cleared. And then they're on their way. Now, that, one of the things that did not get mentioned is, aside from the rovers that we have in the 21 and over area, we also do have a secondary shoot where, in, to get into that sec, that 21 and over area, there are also security individuals there that do watch for underage, that people coming in without wristbands, so on and so forth, on top of individuals that'll be in there with, in that, that beer garden area.
Right, that, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because if, in the licensed area, there is also a no-man's land where we do have, have checkers.
Yes.
Position to make sure that minors can't get in there, or alcohol can be passed from out of there.
Yes, so they'll have to, yes, they'll have to show their, their wristband to get in there as well, and checking to make sure that, yes, there's no, exactly, anybody just passing.
Yes, correct. No further questions.
Mr. Jacob?
I apologize, I didn't like it, your name.
Robert.
Robert, this room's a, how many people were in the beer garden?
I would say three to six, three to 800, somewhere in that range.
And there was 4,500 people at the event?
I would say, well, wrong, yes.
So the beer garden was within the, the actual, like, separated?
It was separated outside of.
And are you aware that there are fake IDs in existence?
Yes.
What actions do you take and instruct your people that you're overseeing to determine whether IDs are fake?
So we have our, the ID booklets, we have actually a book of I fake IDs that we collect, that we share with each of the individual, that we have on the check IDs. We have some of our senior staff train the individuals coming in to show the IDs. We have black lights, we have the black light flashlights, we have, oh my gosh, ID books. We have so many.
If you were to see the license that's on the screen right now, would you have asked additional questions about that license?
Obviously, glaringly obvious is the expiration date on that one. I think we obviously identified that we missed on that one.
No further questions.
That's it, you can ask additional questions if you want.
I know, I'm fine.
Okay, questions, any questions for the witness?
So, wow, my first question is, if you remember, um, do you remember what color the bands you folks were using that night? If you remember, if not, it's not a problem.
I honestly, I don't.
But I'm assuming every, every event or every day has a different color?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your excuse as a witness, Mr. Ramsey, thanks for coming.
So, Mr. Ramsey, you said that, you know, you or Mr. Jewett testified that you guys had four ID checkers?
We probably had six that way.
Okay. And the ID checkers are also the ones responsible for putting on the wristbands?
No, so in that, in a festival setting, we'll have our six ID checkers, and then we'll have individuals behind them that actually wristband.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on that.
And now excuse. Mr. Hudson, do you have any other witnesses?
No.
Have any other evidence?
No.
Okay, do you rest?
Yes.
We're not gonna go into the closing argument phase, starting with Mr. Jacob.
Thank you, Chair members of the commission. 4,500 people is a lot of people. When you have 800 people drinking beer, that, that does not, the, the quantity of amount of people does not relieve the licensee of their, their duty. All the witnesses tonight testified that they're well aware that there are fake IDs in existence. They also testified that the date, as reflected on the ID, should have given them pause to ask additional questions of the individual who presented that ID. Finally, it didn't take long for the commission investigation, investigators to notice someone is youthful and approach them and ask them a simple question before finding out the individual was a minor. Had the licensees employees employed the similar actions that the licensed investigators were able to employ, they would have not, have caught this individual presenting the fake ID and would have hopefully turned them away. It is on the license to prove that they, in good faith, thought that this individual was 21. However, the evidence tonight suggests that investigators were quickly able to determine the individual was 21, and there was evidence on the ID that should have alerted the individuals checking the ID that the individual was not 21 and had them ask additional questions. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes. Under the situation at hand, with regards to the ID and, and its expiration date, tonight was the first time that was ever been brought up inside the evidence with the investigators, as well as. investigators, as well as, um, with, um, with the ID checkers on our end. Um, that is something that, um, I have to say that the commissioner, you, uh, you're the only one that actually brought that up.
That's why they pay me the big bucks.
And with that, it's, it's, uh, it's very eye-opening for me as a chairman of a nonprofit that has an event center to see that, um, that it had gone since twenty nineteen, that this was the first time that anybody actually recognized that the expiration date was, uh, passed when any of us probably would never be alive.
Nothing gets past me, Mr. Mr. Hudson.
And, and, and so, so for that to be, um, a determining factor, knowing that the investigators, as well as our ID checkers, missed that, and that the ID was given back to the patron. Um, is there some, there are some serious questions about this situation? And that's really one of the reasons why I wanted to, to bring this to this point, is that I see some interesting flaws that had occurred with this. And I think, if anything, it's a good lesson for this commission to see it and see what's happening, because you have concerts that go on every weekend. And these types of, whether it's a rock and roll, or it's, um, a reggae concert, and these types of events have to check IDs, have to ban them, and they get into the beer gardens and be able to have access to alcohol. And inside these licensees, um, have the burden of trying to check hundreds of IDs a night. And when you have things that are so good, like this one was, even though the expiration was wrong, I mean, it got passed some of the brightest inside your office, as well as inside our operation. And was only brought up as a, um, as a, as a point this evening. And I feel that it's a good process that we went through to be able to see that. And I rest on the commission to decide the determination, um, with regards to how we at the academy are dealt with on this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Jacob, any further argument?
Um, no, thank.
Okay, um, thank you for your presentation. The commission's gonna deliberate enough.
Okay, we are back. Thank you for allowing us time to deliberate. I will, we call the matter, calling agenda item number twenty-five, American Renaissance Academy.
Chair, my motion is going to be to find the allegation sustained.
Second.
It's been moved in second to find the allegation sustained. Any objections? Any with reservations? Seeing none, chair votes aye. The allegation has been sustained.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This is a first-time violation, so the recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none, chair votes aye. The one thousand dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, liquor administrative, Ms. Hawaii, administrative matters?
Um, basically, nothing, uh, more than what I circulated earlier today in terms of the weekly report. And I did, uh, very belatedly circulated the updated, we're looking bill tracking table, for your reading enjoyment.
Okay.
So first, this is the most, uh, uh, veto action I've seen from our, our governor in the eight years he's been in office. It's just kinda like, wow, what happened?
Well, that was his chance, right?
Yeah, I guess.
And then on an unrelated matter, since we're on liquor administrator, um, I would like to, um, appoint, the commission has always had two vice chairs, and it, I think it's within the best interest for this commission, now that we are full board, to also appoint a vice chair, a second vice chair for, um, our board, and therefore I would like to appoint Commissioner Mier Schirr as vice chair.
Will you accept Commissioner Mier Schirr?
Gladly, so thank you.
I, I know I should have discussed it with you, and I hate to just. Yeah, I did. I was getting used to it. So the point of action is two sides here. Um, you know.
Much appreciated.
For accepting, so, um, we don't need a vote on it, um, other than just us acknowledging it and, um, you know, now, I'm, I'm just happy to be seated with a full board, and now we can get some things done. Um, and have no, no other business needing a job. Um, Anna, I need you to put back on the agenda next week.